All right, thank you very much. And we will now go on to the, our next work session, which is on, which is on the Family Life Education Advisory Committee Annual Report. And we are joined today by Dr. Presidio and Liz Payne. To make a presentation, I would ask that board members wait for the end of the presentation to ask questions. Mr. Aronat Kofax and I will be watching to see who has questions or comments during the presentation. Dr. Presidio and Ms. Payne are going to try to summarize where we are as quickly as possible, and then we'll go to questions and comments. So, Dr. Presidio, are you leading off, or Ms. Payne, are you?
I'm gonna go ahead and lead off.
All right, go right ahead.
All right, well, good morning, everyone. It's almost noon, so it's not quite afternoon yet, so we've still got a few minutes here. We are running a little bit late, so I recognize that, and I will, as Ms. Evans said, try to provide a high enough level overview that will preserve time in this work session for discussions with board members. So, to start out with, I just wanted to remind folks of the timeline and the process that you see represented on this slide for our Family Life Education Curriculum Advisory Committee work. The committee's report was presented to the board as a new business item last Thursday night on May 10th. We're obviously having our work session today. And then there's an extensive period for community review, where community members can look at all of the committee's recommendations and provide feedback that they would like to have shared with the board. And then, we're scheduled for board action on June 14th. So, today, what we're gonna try to do, in terms of the objectives for this work session, one is to describe a little bit about the FLE program in Fairfax. We're certainly gonna review the purpose and the composition of FLECAC, but most of the time is gonna be spent sharing the recommendations from FLECAC this year, and then having an opportunity for questions and discussion among board members. So, to start out with, I just wanted to remind folks, particularly those folks in the community, that FCPS actually has a locally-developed FLE program that is aligned with the State Department of Education's program. And most of the jurisdictions that we're familiar with in the state of Virginia actually develop their own programs in alignment and in accordance with the state program as well. Our program, of course, is a K-12 program, and it includes both human growth and development and emotional and social health topics. So, when you think about, you know, why we choose to develop a local program, there's a couple reasons. As I said, most jurisdictions make that determination in the state, and the first reason is that we want to make sure that we're able to actually develop the kinds of program materials that are responsive to our local community. So, for example, you might remember in recent years that we were a little bit ahead of the state in terms of talking about human sex trafficking, because that was an issue that we were really dealing with in Northern Virginia. The legislature acted on that, they've included that in their program. But another problem that we have with the state program is that they, they provide a lot of broad standards, but they don't really provide specifics. They really leave that up to the local jurisdictions to figure out how you actually instruct on a particular topic. So, for those reasons, like most divisions in the state, we develop our own program. And when you develop your own program, you do need to have a committee that's involved in supporting the school system with that work, and that is FLECAC, the Family Life Education Curriculum Advisory Committee in FCPS. So, the membership on FLECAC that's required by the state in terms of the community involvement team is listed here on this slide, and this is the exact language from the Board of Education at the top of the slide. So, the Board of Ed provides that if you develop your own local program, you need to have a community involvement team, or a, or a school health advisory board. Those two terms are really used synonymously. And those boards should include individuals such as the members that are listed here. So, a person from Central Office, principals from the various levels, teachers, parents, possibly a board member, members of the clergy, and the medical profession, and other community members. So, the Board of Education doesn't require a particular composition of the committee, but they make recommendations in terms of the types of individuals that should serve on your committee. So, in the middle of that slide, you can see, actually, Fairfax, in terms of our FLECAC membership, we have 33 voting members. Twelve of those members are school board appointees. We have two public health nurses from the Health Department. We have representation from the faith-based community. We have representation from the PTA associations. We have students, and we have principals at each of the levels, and we have nine teachers across the various levels. We also have six non-voting members on our committee, and the committee follows Robert's Rules of Order. And the reason that I mention that is, I think it's important to note that we actually amended Robert's Rules of Order for the purpose of FLECAC this year in March, because the committee was really doing such a deep dive and looking at the, the FCPS program in great detail, that we wanted to make sure that there was enough opportunity for community members to speak to some of their issues and questions and concerns. So, the committee voted by consensus to require that at least four individuals would speak to a particular motion before it was voted on. So, that was amended in March. In terms of the scope of the work of the committee, last year, the school board requested that the committee do an in-depth comparison of FCPS's local program to the state program. So, that request was made last year, and this year, the committee really focused their work on a comprehensive review of our program. We prepared, at the Central Office staff, we prepared some resources to help the committee in their work. The first resource was a crosswalk that compares all of the lesson objectives between the VDOE program and the FCPS program. We actually prepared that document last year and posted that and made that publicly available last year, but it's posted to Board Docs again this year, and it's posted as a supplement to today's work session. It's a 78-page document, so it's very comprehensive in nature. Also, the committee had access to all of the FLE program materials when they were doing this work this year, but of course, in Fairfax, we make access available to all of our parents in terms of the FLE programs. All of that information has been posted on our website, currently on Blackboard. So, I would point out that that was a significant charge for the committee this year, to do that in-depth comparison. The committee only developed 21 recommendations for changes. So, when you think about a 78-page crosswalk, looking at all the lesson materials, and the committee only recommended seven changes to the program for this year, you can see that there were no recommended changes to the K7 lesson objectives this year. There was a change to the Grade 4 media, there were changes to Grades 8 through 12 lesson objectives, and then there was a recommendation to add opioid and heroin prevention instruction in Grades 11 and 12. So, in the subsequent slides, you've got the detailed information of what those recommended changes were. Some of the slides I'm gonna go through quickly, some of them I'm gonna pause and go through in a little bit more detail. So, the first recommended change was at Grade 4, and the recommendation of the committee is to use what, the video that we use currently in Grade 3, when we instruct on the Lesson Objective 4.3, where students recognize ways to deal with threatening and uncomfortable situations. Last year, in the dissenting opinion of FLECAC, the dissenting opinion actually requested that we use this video at Grade 4. We did not adopt that last year, because the majority of the committee did not vote in favor of that. This year, however, the majority of the committee did vote in favor, and the committee's recommending that we use the current Grade 3 video in Grade 3, and also at Grade 4. You do see here, in terms of the vote, we've illustrated the vote on each of these slides for the committee, there were four no votes, and those no votes really are characterized by those members feeling that it wasn't necessary to show the video in Grades 3 and 4, that once was enough. But the majority of the committee would like to show it in Grades 3 and 4. On Grade 8, Lesson Objective 8.4, which deals with students demonstrating strategies for resolving conflicts that arise in families and peer groups, the recommendation of the committee is to actually move this unit of instruction out of FLE and into the General Health Program. So, the committee voted 20 to 3 to do that, but the three individuals that voted against that would like to keep this lesson content contained in FLE, so that parents could continue to have the option to opt their children out of this particular lesson objective. Now, on the next recommended change, it's with respect to 8.5, Lesson Objective 8.5 at Grade 8, and that objective is that students are gonna identify that development of individual identity occurs over a lifetime and includes the component of sexual orientation and gender identity. And the recommendation, it, the text in the descriptive statement, any language that has a strike-through, the committee recommended that that language be deleted, and any language that is underlined, the committee is recommending that that language be inserted. So, essentially, what the committee is recommending here is to replace the term, with respect to this particular lesson objective only, to replace the term "biological sex" with "sex assigned at birth." And you can see that the vote was 18 to 4, and I want to talk a little bit more about what this actually means. So, I just think there's a few things to kind of point out regarding this recommendation. The first, which is very important, is that the term "sex assigned at birth" is currently used in FCPS lesson definitions in Grades 7 through 10, and it's only used for lessons related to the topic of gender identity. So, to say that another way, we currently use the terminology "sex assigned at birth" to define the concept of biological sex in the context of lessons on gender identity only. So, for example, in our current FLE program, at Grade 8, the definition for biological sex is as follows: A person's biological sex is the sex that they are assigned at birth. It is associated primarily with physical attributes, their reproductive anatomy, and other anatomical physiological structures, chromosomes, and hormones. We have similar definitions at Grades 9 and 10. So, the committee is not recommending any change to this definition. Rather, the recommendation for the change here is only with respect to the terminology in the lesson objective at this particular grade level. Oh, I skipped one part that is also important to point out, is that the "sex assigned at birth" terminology is aligned with terminology used by the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Psychological Association, and the American College of Physicians. So, it is very much in alignment with mainstream medical professional associations. It's also important to point out that we are not the only local jurisdiction that uses the terminology "sex assigned at birth." It is used in Alexandria, and it is also used in Montgomery County Public Schools. So, I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that as well. The next several recommendations, you can see the committee consensus was unanimous, so I'm just gonna kind of breeze through those pretty quickly. Which slide are we on there, Liz? 12? Let me actually go back one. So, this one actually, I skipped over, I apologize for that. The committee vote was full consensus. It's important to point out, the, the lesson objective here is dealing with the consequences of teen sexual activity and exploring the benefits of abstaining from sexual activity until marriage. Grade 9, Lesson Objective 9.1, is that students will identify the family as a basic unit of society, and his or her responsibility as a member of the family, so there's full committee consensus on that. The next lesson objective is 9.3. Students will identify effects, prevention strategies, and appropriate resources for help reporting sexual abuse. So, again, there was full consensus on the new language and the descriptive statement of that lesson objective as well. Now, the next lesson objective, 9.4, is that students will identify factors that contribute to healthy relationships and families, friendship, and dating. There was not full committee consensus here, there were two opposing votes on adding some of the language that was recommended by the full committee, and really, those two individuals were opposed to striking language on respect for self. You can see that that is struck through in this particular proposed lesson objective. Lesson Objective 9.3 is that students will identify sexual abstinence as the appropriate choice for adolescents, and identify appropriate methods for expressing feelings and affection. And you can see that the vote here was 15 to 4 about adding the term "abstinence" in the descriptive statement of the lesson objective. The term is in the lesson objective itself already. So, the four individuals felt that abstinence was already explicit in the current language, and that it did not need to be mentioned in the descriptive statement. However, you can see the full committee voted in favor of adding that language into the descriptive statement. Continuing at 9th grade, 9.4, and human growth and development, students will examine methods of contraception. And here, you can see that the vote, again, was not unanimous, it was 22 to 2, and two of the members voted against this new language, and really, I think their concerns could be characterized as feeling that the additional language of "abstinence" as the most effective method for preventing STIs was not appropriate. They preferred the original language, that abstinence is the only 100% effective method for preventing STIs. But 22 of the committee members, you can see, felt that the language change was necessary because it is possible to contract STIs in other ways than through sexual activity. You can think of blood transfusions and other ways, breast milk, that STIs can actually be contracted. So, that is the difference in terms of that vote. The next lesson objective, 9.5, students will review information about bacterial, viral, and parasitic sexually transmitted infections, to include prevention, transmission, diagnosis, and treatment. So, this is the first time that you see the introduction of the language "pre-exposure prophylaxis" as HIV prevention. And you can see that the vote to add PrEP was 22 to 2. And it's important to note a couple things here as well. So, first, PrEP is actually already mentioned in the FCPS curriculum in Grade 10. If we expand the information around the inclusion of PrEP into FLE at Grade 9, the instruction that students would be provided with essentially is that they would receive information that PrEP would be for people who engage in behaviors that put them at high risk for HIV infection. And instruction would also include that students would need to talk with parents, physicians, healthcare providers, to determine whether or not that medication might be appropriate for them. We make no medical suggestions or inferences. But the reason that we're proposing, as a committee, to include PrEP in our FLE program really stems from the CDC, the Center for Disease Control's advocacy, that it has a highly effective rate as preventing students that are at high exposure, or preventing individuals that might be at high risk and high exposure for HIV. And again, there are other school divisions in our local area that do include PrEP in their curriculum as well. So, again, Alexandria and Montgomery County do include instruction on PrEP. Continuing in Grade 9, the lesson objective that students will recognize the development of sexuality as a lifelong aspect of personality, you can see that the vote here was 19 to 4. 19 of the members felt that the term "clergy," you can see, is struck from the descriptive statement. 19 of the members felt that the term "clergy" wasn't necessary because it was included in "trusted adult," what is meant by a trusted adult. But four members felt very strongly that we should retain the term "clergy" in this lesson description. And I do want to point out for the community and the school board, that the term "clergy" is used numerous times in the FLE curriculum. So, if we were to strike the term "clergy" with respect to this particular lesson objective, it would still be in the FLE curriculum. So, I just, I want to point out that this particular recommendation to remove the term "clergy" is only with respect to Lesson Objective 9.6.
Sloan, could you just clarify, because it could end up being a board question? It also was struck with, or counselor? Can, can you just speak to a little bit of the discussion with that?
The counselor is the same issue as clergy, in terms of the 19 members that voted for removing those terms. They felt that it wasn't necessary to enumerate all the examples of trusted adults, that those concepts and terms would be implicit in the concept of trusted adult. Grade 10, we move to Grade 10 now, 10.5. Students will examine the most common bacterial, viral, and parasitic sexually transmitted infections. And again, this is the exact same issue that we talked about at Grade 9, with the introduction of PrEP. So, I'm not gonna go into that in more detail, we've already discussed that, and the same issue occurs in Grades 11 and Grade 12 in terms of a split committee vote. Also, at Grade 10, Lesson Objective 10.6 is that students will recognize the development of sexuality as an aspect of one's total personality. You can see that the vote was split here, 19 to 4. And primarily, the new language at the bottom is that students with questions or concerns about their sexual orientation or gender identity will be advised to talk with a parent or a trusted adult. And that was really the focus of disagreement at the committee here, because in general, I think it's important to point out that in FCPS, we always advise our students, no matter what the situation is, when they're dealing, when we're dealing with sensitive topics and sensitive issues, to speak first with their parents or other trusted adults. But the four members that opposed this felt that including this additional language with that new sentence might actually raise issues for students with questions around sexual orientation or gender identity that would convey to them a value judgment, that if they had questions now, they need to go and talk to somebody about it. So, really, the, the four members here did not feel it was necessary to instruct students to go and speak with a trusted adult, and they did not want to press any value judgments towards students. Moving on to Grade 10, again, here, this particular lesson objective, there was strong consensus on the part of the committee for adding the establishment of personal boundaries and being respectful of personal boundaries in this particular lesson objective. We move to Grade 11, and again, you see a vote of 22 to 2 on a lesson objective that really has to do with the issue of PrEP again, at the 11th grade, and so we've seen it at the 9th and 10th grade, now at the 11th grade, and we'll see it once more at the 12th grade. The next lesson objective has to do with the same issue that we already talked about, with abstinence and the language, should it be 100% or should it be the most effective method? Which form of language should we use, as we discussed previously? So, that's the reason for the committee vote split here. 11.3, the lesson objective, that students will examine healthy and unhealthy relationships, dating violence, and strategies for risk reduction, prevention, and available support services. So, there was a split vote here, and really, the split vote was due to the lack of consensus around some of the language around personal boundaries. So, it was really more of a language issue than a concept issue here. We move to Grade 12, and we see again, the committee split 22 to 2 regarding the inclusion of concepts of PrEP in our curriculum. Continuing at Grade 12, we see another example of a committee split vote of 22 to 2 on the correct language to use around the concept of abstinence, 100% effective or most effective method for preventing STIs. And then, the very last recommendation of the full committee was to include instruction in Grades 11 and 12 on the dangers around opioid and heroin use and prevention. The committee felt in favor of including that instruction, 22 to 2, full consensus, but felt like it should occur somewhere other than FLE. It should occur somewhere where every student in the system receives that instruction, so perhaps in social studies or someplace else in the curriculum. So, finally, I wanted to present a summary overview of the dissenting opinion that was authored by four members of the committee. You have that in full, it's posted on Board Docs. I'm sorry, three members of the committee, my apologies. You have that in full, it's contained as part of the FLECAC Annual Report that's posted on Board Docs. So, just to briefly summarize the recommendations, the dissenting members of the committee felt like, with respect to the committee process and composition, there should be more open discussion on each question for a reasonable period of time. As I mentioned, in March, the committee did adopt an amendment to Robert's Rules of Order to provide more opportunity for discussion on sensitive issues and topics that the committee is dealing with. And then, they also are recommending to increase the proportion of parents who have children in FCPS on the committee. Additionally, the dissenting opinion recommends including information about the potential risks and side effects of medical treatment relating to transgender transitioning, medical interventions for sex reassignment involving hormonal therapy or surgical treatments in Grades 7 through 10. And I do want to point out here that FCPS lessons do not currently mention hormonal therapy or surgical treatments, and we do not have any intention of adding those concepts into our program at this time at all. And then, the second bullet point is the committee, the dissenting members of the committee were recommending to continue to use the term "biological sex" rather than "sex assigned at birth" in that 8th grade lesson objective that we looked at. Also, they're recommending that we communicate the risks and side effects of contraceptives in Grades 9, 11, and 12, recommending to retain the Grade 8 emotional and social health objective and not remove it to the health curriculum, as I discussed previously, and recommending teaching "abstinence" as the only 100% effective method of preventing And finally, continuing to list clergy among the persons that students are encouraged to consult with, and they oppose adding instruction on the use of PrEP to the curriculum in Grades 9 through 12. So, I actually think, I stuck to the time limit that I discussed with the meeting managers, I hope that wasn't too fast, but hopefully, we'll have plenty of time for discussion now.
All right, I only have one board member so far, that's Mr. Moon, but, all right, I see Mrs. Strauss. Mr. Moon?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions to ask first, and have one advocacy on one of the lesson objectives. First of all, Dr. Presidio, by the way, thank you for the presentation, and that, when I see the number of committee members voting or present and actually voting, when the numbers don't add up, the, do I assume that numbers not included as voting in favor or no abstentions?
So, I'm gonna let Dr. Payne answer that particular question, and probably several others. I just want to mention, again, that Dr. Payne is the liaison to the committee, she's our coordinator of our health program, PE program in Fairfax County, and she does a tremendous job supporting the work of the committee, so I'm gonna let her address certainly the procedural kinds of questions.
Yes, sir, so that is correct. So, we do not have a roll call vote as part of our committee guidelines, therefore, we just have yeses and nos, and I give the total members, and that would be the abstentions, if you do the math.
Okay, thank you. The second question has to do with Lesson Objective 8.4. I do understand about opting versus opt-out, whether those dissenting committee members said anything about the lesson of, lesson objective itself to be objectionable.
I don't think that it was objectionable, but when you look at that again, and we're on Slide 8, I'll let Liz kind of flip us back to Slide 8 there, so that everybody can take a look at the language. The lesson objective itself is that students are gonna demonstrate strategies for resolving conflicts that arise in families and peer groups, and I think the dissenting votes here felt like discussion around resolving conflicts in families should be something that families discuss as a family, and they might want to opt their children out of that instruction, and that was why it should be retained in FLE instead of moving to General Health.
Okay, thank you. The last one is my advocacy on 9.6. Removing of clergy and counselor from Lesson Objective, or descriptive statement, as I understand why the majority wanted to remove those languages. However, at the same time, let me ask you, either Dr. Payne or Dr. Presidio, would there be any harm done by keeping those languages?
No, I, I don't believe so. Like I said, we already have the term "clergy" in many other places in our curriculum. other places in our curriculum, so there would really not be a problem with retaining it here. I just wanted to, again, convey the committee's rationale for voting in favor of removing it was to not enumerate all the specific individuals. But again, I think we could very easily retain the term clergy in this lesson objective.
What about, what about, I mean, I don't see a teacher. Is that a particular reason? Or just teacher is a part of the trusted adult?
If we were going to make any changes to the committee's recommendations, I would recommend that we stick with just retaining the term clergy, which is something that previous committees had voted in favor of, instead of trying to add additional language that the committee wouldn't have had time to vet yet.
What about keeping counselor too?
We certainly could do that as well.
Okay, my advocacy is that maybe we could do it this way. And then the third line on page 7 of the report, that, what, that's up there, 9.6. I'm going to just use my report. On the page 7 of the report itself, 9.6, that's on page 7 of this, not the slide, that right after talk with the parent, I would advocate that we put or other trusted adults, such as members of clergy and counselors. So it will be, students with questions or concern about their sexual orientation or gender identity will be advised to talk with a parent or other trusted parent, trusted adults, such as members of clergy and counselors.
Yeah, so I definitely have that change. I think probably the board staff has that language change as well. If that were something that the board wanted to do, we certainly could make that change.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Moon, I believe the process for that would be to offer an amendment on June 14th, correct?
When it comes for a vote.
When it comes up for a vote. So are you...
Correct, correct. I just wanted to see, wanted to see whether there would be some...
And so you're asking your colleagues whether they could support an amendment for that. All right. And are you finished, Mr. Moon?
I'm done for now.
Thank you so much. Ms. Strauss?
First of all, thank you, Mr. Moon, for suggesting that amendment. I would support that. And I know that throughout our FLE program, discussion of sensitive topics, we always urge our students to consult with their parents and trusted adults. That, that's really where they need to go for their questions and help with that. So thank you, Mr. Moon, for bringing that forward. And thank you, Dr. Presidio, for providing the entire report and the dissenting report so that we get a sense of, of, of the, the discussion. That really helps to give us the background. I do, I do support all the other recommendations in, in the main report. But again, I, I really appreciate being able to hear all of it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Schultz?
So I've got a number of questions. I just want to ask a fundamental question, and if you don't mind, I'm going to first, with all due respect to, to you folks, Dr. Braybrand, what do you think the objective of family life education is?
I think the objective of family life education is to provide our students with the knowledge and supports for them as they go through school to deal with, to deal with topics that many may have in their conversations in homes, but they may not necessarily have. And I think the school has to be a trusted partner with families. And I believe family life education has had a long history in Fairfax County of being a place where information can be shared that can be helpful for students and helping them as they move through the continuum of growing up. And it's, it's a place for the social, emotional supports that we've been talking about as a board and our leadership team over the last few years.
Okay, I appreciate that. That's a, a, a good off-the-cuff. I wanted to just have kind of like what your baseline was. So in that regard, I guess, one, I'm a little bit concerned about the question, the discussions they may not be having at home. But let's just put that aside. I, I guess my fundamental question then is maybe to Dr. Presidio. Do you feel at any point with some of the language that's provided here, or maybe even some of the language that's been embedded previous to this, that we've crossed sort of the Rubicon of giving information that is necessary for the development of students, for the parents who opt in, and, and teaching about sexual reproduction and what they need to know about their bodies, to actually, you know, going well beyond that, you know, teaching how to have sex or the way to think about sex as opposed to learning about their bodies and reproductive cycles and, you know, things like sex traffic and everything else? Do you feel like we've pushed beyond that in the development of our own system-based curriculum that's not the state's?
Well, I would say a couple of things to that. First, I think it's important, and I appreciate your original question to Dr. Braybrand as well. It's important to recognize that VDOE provides guidance around the standards that we need to talk about, and there's objectives related to each of those, right? So one of them is around human sexuality. And I think the question in terms of like, what are the values that we want to really be, you know, focused on in our curriculum is more of a question for the community than it is for me. That's the role, I think, of the Fleecac Committee. It's the role of board members to determine the appropriateness of the inclusion of topics in the curriculum. The report that we're providing to the board is the committee's report. As I mentioned, there are 33 voting members. Central office staff are not voting members on, on the committee. So I think that is really the question that the board always has to try to answer. Are we reflecting our community's needs well in our program?
Okay, so I'm really glad you brought that up because you said, you know, what the values are that we're trying to message comes from the community and that that's the point of the committee. And I appreciate Mr. Moon highlighting that at the bottom of these, to my knowledge, I didn't see any votes ever totaled to 33. And so that, I think, becomes the essence of the issue, is you, Dr. Braybrand, on an off-the-cuff question, your answer included a trusted partner with families. You, Dr. Presidio, included in your off-the-cuff answer that the message is, the message of what we, what we message in terms of values is for the community to speak. So the question becomes truly, how representative of the community is, is Fleecac? And when you point, and if you could go to the slide that you list, the couple of organizations that you say include sex assigned at birth in particular, I want to highlight those because, like what I've just described is one of my concerns, these organizations in, potentially in outward statements, although internal documents say, say otherwise, the three, the APA, those decisions about that, that definition are made by a small committee. They're not made by the, you know, 66,000 doctors or whomever. Whereas the American College of Pediatrics, their, their doctors do vote. And so, yes, that's only 20,000, but they do vote on what that is. And I'm wondering, when you take a term like that, what does our biology curriculum teach? If, because you said this is limited only to the FLE curriculum, then how are you aligning what is taught here to, if they leave FLE and then go into their, their biology portion of their curriculum, where, how is, and not to use a pun, but how, how do you transition from what's said in an FLE curriculum under this guise versus what's taught as a part of biology?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. Again, I mean, I do want to reread the definition that we use in the FLE program because I think it's very important to understand that when we are talking about the terminology sex assigned at birth, we're using that in conjunction with our definition of biological sex. So again, at grade 8, because that's where this recommended change would be in the FLE program, in grade 8, in our definitions for biological sex, which are in the curriculum, and nothing in these recommendations on the part of the committee this year would remove, our definition of grade 8 biological sex is that a person's biological sex is the sex that they're assigned at birth and associated primarily with the physical attributes, their reproductive anatomy, and other anatomical, physiological structures, chromosomes and hormones. So those are the things that we discuss in biology to, to your question.
So we had, we had, and unfortunately, my children were in, in that time period, we had a Virginia history book for years that was riddled with errors. We didn't keep teaching it because it was already in the curriculum. So, you know, just because it occurs someplace else doesn't mean we transfer the knowledge into FLE. And my problem is, is that what do you teach children about the sex of a fetus that's internal still to the mother? Do you teach them that that, that you can't assign a sex before birth? So this is where you start to, it starts to unravel really for me, is what is it that is necessary to make this change that makes the curriculum better or more accurate? And I haven't been able to find anything that says that there's any medical community consensus that this is actually medical fact. In fact, it's not because we know that people find out the sex of their children before they're born. So sex assigned at birth, you know, denies the fact that we're determining sex prior to, to birth. So the medical accuracy, when we're getting down to what we're teaching children as fact, because this is supposed to be an education, what is it that is factually accurate is where, where I struggle in particular with this. I agree with the change that Mr. Moon has highlighted in particular. I, I am worried that we have educators, and I brought this up to your predecessor, Dr. Braybrand, who basically, I think, should be granted, you know, conscientious objector status. And I know we don't force anybody to teach this, but there are people who have been teaching family life education for decades in, in FCPS, who have privately come forward and said they can't teach it anymore if we do this because it's no longer, not only is not medically accurate, it, it, now you're, now they'll be violating their, their, their conscience, either from a, from a cultural background, from a religious background, from a moral background, you know, any number of concerns have come up there. So then, do we have people who are not necessarily the committed FLE educators who've been teaching it for, again, many, many years, now, who have a passion for imparting medically accurate information to children, now no longer willing to teach? Then who does teach? The people who are less passionate about it, you know? Now we're sort of stiff-arming people into the role. So I'm concerned about that. Just like we were saying earlier about what was, what is a, what is our job versus what is a medical doctor's job versus what is a private clergy member's job with regard to the discussion around PREP? There are no CDC and no FDA clinical guidelines or protocols for, for children under the age of 18. And actually, it only says adult, and there's some documents that say they're even concerned because they haven't defined what an adult is. And so if CDC and FDA don't have any clinical guidelines or any protocol for the delivery of a, that, that is a highly controversial drug within, you know, certain communities, why would we then embed that type of information? And if anybody says to us, well, because another school district does, that's the worst possible. I mean, you know, because somebody else does it, we should do it too. I mean, that's, that's the last place of resort. What is the medical information? And then you get down into the issue with this and other issues around what are the risks? I mean, if we're, if we, if the objective with FLE is to act in partnership with parents, as a trusted partner of parents, and to work with the community to reflect the values that the community wants us to impart, and it's only a few people that are deciding this, and I don't really see any staff opposition to anything. So it's clearly driven by the committee. Then what we're saying is, is that we don't have to impart things like, what are the risks? What are the risks with an abortion? What are the risks with medical or pharmaceutical interventions like PREP? If, if we're not going to delve down into risks, I mean, that's, that's actually really medically accurate information that allows people to weigh the consequences of, should I take this? Should I not take this? Should I pursue this? Should I not pursue this? Let me fully understand. I mean, any commercial from Big Pharma that you hear, I mean, it's somewhat, I mean, they make SNL skits out of, you know, you know, side effects could include. If we won't include that, then how are we being medically accurate? So I think there are a lot of concerns here about the reasonableness of where we've gone with some of this information. It's not that we don't provide it for who may need it. I do think that we have to be a resource in the event that there are some who need it, but enforcing it on everyone and, and professing that, well, some families can opt out. Well, we have, we have a mission creep is really what the answer is. And then what is said, once we leave the classroom, you know, you don't, what, what's said in FLE doesn't stay that way. You know, it's not the vagus of our curriculum. So I do think that there are some pretty significant concerns that you should look at based on your first initial guidance to us, that this is supposed to be entrusted partnership, and that it is supposed to be reflective of what the community messages. And I don't think that we have a meeting of the minds, that we really have done the public engagement. The, the state, the state guidelines, and you, you underline should, which I found curious. The, the State Department of Education is saying we should do this. We should have parents. We should do broad community engagement. Not having a presentation on Thursday, and I understand that's historically been the, the approach, is that it's addressed in a work session like this. The public doesn't see a work session like this, like they do a regular board meeting. A online survey at the end of the school year with the graduations, you know, pressing down on us, SOLs are happening right now, AP and IB exams. This is a very stressful time of, of the school year, and to say that this is a reasonable expectation of what the state is looking for in terms of the involvement of parents and the involvement of a community for broad engagement, particularly when you're dealing with the most controversial issues, I don't think is representative of the word should by emphasizing, well, it says you should. It doesn't mean you have to. Yeah, the clear intent from the State Board of Education is, is that there be broader engagement.
Thank you. Did you have particular next steps, Ms. Schultz, at this? All right. Ms. McLaughlin?
So I really appreciate Dr. Presidio, you and Dr. Payne really breaking out for us what were the recommendations, where was the committee on these things. It's always extremely helpful to get that additional context. And Dr. Braybrand, you weren't here when my prior FLE appointee was there, but she served for several years out of Bragg District, a nurse practitioner, nursing professor. And I just wanted to say publicly, she had the highest praise for Dr. Payne and continues to hold her in high regard.
As I do too.
So my, my appointee is now over on Shack, and Miss is working with Dr. Payne very much. Ms. Schultz said something just now as I was about to speak, and it, it really captured, I think, where I want to come to this with my colleagues. She said something about controversial issues. And I think that is what's so essential that we, as the we, as the board, not get drawn into, and we, as a school system, not get drawn into. This is family life education, and it is my perspective that, number one, I absolutely value stakeholder engagement. I think it's very important that this advisory committee do that. It advises us with recommendations. However, in the end, and I felt this way also with our SRNR, which we're going to talk about next, in the end, the public, the families, the students, all rely upon this board and this school division to operate based on research and best practice. That, in the end, is what this really needs to be. And so, while I, again, with all of our advisory committees, every single one of our advisory committees, their input and their recommendations are appreciated. But I guess I would ask Dr. Payne not to put you on too much notice, is there anything in the committee's recommendations that, from your subject matter expertise, and Dr. Sloan's as well, where you would say to the superintendent and this board, these were the recommendations, however, as someone who's tasked with the oversight of this, here are the recommendations I would have concerns about? Because in the end, Dr. Braybrand, we can support the recommendations that come from the advisory committee, but I don't have the subject matter expertise that staff has on this. And when our advisory committees make recommendations, whether it's MSAOC or, you know, Advanced Academics, we welcome that input, but we don't greenlight it to go into effect. We still get staff to say, "We can support their recommendations for the following reasons." So, if that wasn't something you guys have thought about till now, please don't have my question putting you on the spot now, but that was kind of for me. I want to help this board get above the passion that I so appreciate is coming from our community, but is there anything here that would give us pause in the responsibility we have as an educational system?
So, first of all, thank you for the compliments. I would say there isn't anything that we can support. I think the responsibility on our end is to ensure that the language is correct. So, for instance, there are many things in our curriculum we hope our students don't need now, but may need at some point in the future. So, PrEP is one of those examples. So, being very clear in instruction about who PrEP is for, what it does, what it does not do, saying that, you know, these are not decisions you may be making now, but may need to make in the future, and making sure they have access to that information, and make sure they, you know, talk with their parents, this is not in absence of healthcare providers giving that consultation, because they may have a variety of health needs that may preclude them from using any medication.
So, thank you. But at a very macro level, then, at this point in time, there's nothing in the committee's recommendations that, the both of you that have the ultimate responsibility in making sure, and Dr. Braybrand, really, it comes to you, there's nothing in the recommendations where you would say, we would disagree with the recommendations coming out of the committee and think it's not educational best practice? Like, in other words, everything that's here has educational best practice in support of it? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, obviously, we don't want to greenlight something that we could say from research and best practice, this would not be helpful to students. But if everything you see here is fine, that is what gives me comfort as a board member to say...
Right. I think what you're saying is, we have a lot of advisory committees that come to you and they bring things.
Yeah.
And, you know, just being honest, I know I won't keep repeating, but since the advisory stuff, this is like the first of several, learning how it's done here in this role, you're wanting to know, separate from the advisory committee, what our own staff would say or not say about it, and how we've looked for that before. We certainly had this presented leadership team. I asked for feedback and comments. I got no objections to the things that were shared. Have I explicitly, for every advisory committee, said, I'm just being honest with you guys, said, "It needs to come through staff and we need to greenlight it or not greenlight it before it comes to you"? No, but I'm willing to talk to this board about a structure in place. One other matter, I would just say, is a matter of what we did talk about. I thought it was very important, Dr. Presidio, to do an outstanding presentation, in my view, to share dissenting opinion, to share and let you see the votes, and also explain on a number of slides where other people were coming from. I think we need to have that kind of conversation, and we need to model that more often when we bring things before the board, because there's always multiple sides. I like, personally, I like Mr. Moon's addition, his recommended tweak. As part of my journey in life, a trusted adult has included clergy. So, I think there's little tweaks like that that we can look at. I don't have, as superintendent, I don't have concerns about the overall recommendations brought here. I do think we've got to figure out how, family life, from the day I taught it, I was a government teacher, I taught 12th graders, what I found is, a lot of our young people think they know and they don't know. And as much as we'd love to thank families, including my own, that's, you know, I try to put on the parent hat and the superintendent hat. I think school systems do have a responsibility to try to be an honest broker of information. We've got to get the balance right, as Ms. Schultz said. It's tricky, because it's figuring out, how do you create that partnership without crossing lines that are red lines for families? We do have the opt-out process, but we also want to make sure that, we want frankly, as many folks to opt in and say, "This is an important curriculum that I want to expose my son or daughter to." So, I'll keep in mind the other part about how to build in sort of the staff check. Is there anything, as we do these kind of presentations, do we bring you a slide at the end where there's staff concern or sort of staff recommendation? I've just got to come up with what that model would look like with, as we work with you all.
Well, I appreciate that. I will just say to my colleagues, this is absolutely my expectation, that the staff would look through any of this, and if they had any, again, subject matter expertise concern, that they inform the board. We have to ensure that the public trusts our decision-making, and our decision-making isn't just an advisory committee, whether it's 12, 30, 50 people, whether it's 200 people who weigh in. We represent a school division of 190,000 kids and their families, and we will be better leaders to help build trust in the community when we can say, "We did take stakeholder input, but we also had our subject matter experts who were reading the research and best practice, who advised the board and said, 'This is the best way to deliver FLE.'" That, to me, is how we can speak with authority and also maybe help quell some of the, what's the board's composition. Because I will respectfully disagree with Ms. Schultz. I don't think this is based on partisanship, political ideology. In the end, I believe every single resident Fairfax County wants us to deliver family life education, and frankly, any degree of education that is based on research and best practice. We do that, and the public can, again, say, "Well, that's a little bit more information than I think my child needs," and they opt out. And to the point that was raised last Thursday among our citizen participants, our board members know, getting our community to fill out forms and have 100% participation is very difficult. So, the opt-out approach for FLE, I still strongly support, because I don't want to see a lot of families who just don't get the forms in, didn't know it was there. Children, in the end, will come home and talk to their parents if they're uncomfortable with what they're learning in the school day. I mean, and so, I, again, want to thank the really hard work, but I will also say, in my final remarks, I hope that we, as a board, will partner with Dr. Braybrand and help Dr. Payne, and help Dr. Presidio, and help the FLECAC to get outside of the passions, wherever people are on the issue, and speak to education, research, best practice to help our kids and families. We do that, and I think we can calm down some of the rhetoric that's been going on. But I'm supportive of this, because I'm hearing that this represents research and best practice. I'm also supportive of Mr. Moon's amendment. As a social worker and a background in mental health, counselors are a very important role. I like the idea that we're leading with trusted adult, because that can mean many things. And as someone who has friends who are agnostic, and some who are atheist, you know, I don't want to just delineate one or two trusted adults and create that angst. So, I think Mr. Moon's language kind of helps capture all of that. And, you know, again, I look forward to hearing what my colleagues are thinking today.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Was there a next step in your, was there a next step in there, or no?
I think it doesn't need to be official. I think I heard from Dr. Braybrand that there, it's important that these recommendations annually be vetted by staff, so in our future annual presentation, it's just clarity there. And actually, Dr. Braybrand, maybe, Ms. Evans, when the board votes on this, I think it would be important for us, we're going to have the conversation that, you know, Dr. Braybrand can say, and any of us can ask the question, I want to put on the spot, that says, "Dr. Braybrand, your staff vetted this and is supportive of the recommendations." That would be something I'd like to have said at the vote.
Okay, thank you. Just a quick time check, we do have seven more board members that wish to speak on this topic, and we are a little behind, so just, we were intending to finish this up at 1:00, so we're obviously not going to be there, but just to be cognizant of that. So, next three board members are Mr. Wilson, Ms. Hines, and Ms. Palchek. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Just to, I don't know how long this will take, it may take a few more minutes, so I would ask for my fellow board members' indulgence to allow me to continue on a little bit, because I do have a number of questions. So, Dr. Presidio, you mentioned that most jurisdictions develop their own programs. In Virginia, do you know what the percentage is that develops their own program?
Oh, I don't know the percent overall. We've been in recent contact with all the surrounding jurisdictions, and they essentially all take the approach that we do, that you start with the state standards, what's required, and that you adopt and modify those to meet the context of your local jurisdiction. So, all of the jurisdictions that we spoke to locally did the same thing that we do.
And do you know of any jurisdictions specifically that use the state curriculum that don't adopt their own program?
I'm sure there are some. I don't have any. I mean, I'd be happy to try to contact the state coordinator and get some of that information for you.
And what I'm getting at is to try to understand sort of the diversity of instruction across our state. I know we've talked about best practices and being in alignment with the Board of Education, but I guess one question I would have is, you know, what does the spectrum allow for, in terms of latitude amongst school systems? To understand, I think that is to understand what is, what are the ideas within a community that people might think is appropriate? So, I think that would be a wonderful next step, is to find out, sort of like, if you were to take a poll and find jurisdictions in the state that have sort of radically different curriculums to ours, for us to understand, sort of, what is the spectrum that, as curriculum developers, you have, what latitude you have in terms of developing curriculum?
Well, we'd be happy to ask the state coordinator. I don't know what response we may or may not get from that. I would say additionally, though, remember that this year, the charge for the school system, for the FLECAC committee, was to look at our program in comparison to the state's program, and we produced that crosswalk, which is posted, and I would reference that for folks that have questions in the community about how our program compares to the state program, because it's very comprehensive. As I said, it's a 78-page document that goes lesson objective by objective under each of the standards, comparing what the state provides and recommends and what we do. So, I think that's a really good resource for people that have questions in the community. So, and I would also say that when the FLECAC this year spent an entire year asking that very question, "How does our program compare to the state program?", they only developed the 21 recommendations that I shared with you.
But I think I hear what you're saying, as being, "We compared lesson objectives", right? I mean, the objective...
Well, that's what the state provides. That's the level of detail that they provide.
Yeah, that's the headline. So, I guess the curriculum itself is what is more in detail developed also in Fairfax County, right? So, I think that's sort of the specifics of what's in the lessons themselves.
Well, one thing I know is, we're one of the few jurisdictions that actually provides public access to our curriculum. So, that would be very difficult to try to obtain from other schools.
And frankly, I think that is a wonderful aspect of Fairfax County, is that we do have an open process where you can look now and see the curriculum. Okay, I'm going to start, take the next question. I'm going to go through the slides, and then I'm going to have some other questions, too. So, one of the things you mentioned on Slide 4 was that by consensus, the committee voted to ensure that at least four members would have the opportunity to speak on any issues. And I think Ms. Payne is, Dr. Payne is probably in a better position to answer the question, since I'm not sure you are at meetings themselves. But do you feel like there was meaningful discussion? What prompted that vote? Can you talk to the board a little bit about that?
There was concern at the February meeting, when a member, we did adhere to Robert's Rules of Order, and as you know, at any time, someone can call for the question. So, that occurred several times at the February meeting. Some of those topics had been discussed at January's meeting, some had not. And since there was concern expressed about not enough viewpoints were shared, we, I asked the committee in the March meeting if they could, if they would be willing to support the ruling about the four, adding a rule for the four. I will say that, I just want to insert real quickly, thank you all for your appointees. It was a very big charge this year. There was a lot of homework to be done. They all came prepared and reviewed things in advance. So, you know, whereas, you know, I can't say that, you know, maybe their decisions were made before they arrived, I don't know. So, I think there, I think there was discussion before and after.
And so, beyond concerns being brought to you, did you feel like there was, did you personally have concerns about, as the, you know, director of the meeting, that there was adequate discussion, or was it just brought to you by members?
I think, I would only be concerned if they were concerned. If they were comfortable with calling for the question, and they felt that they had the information that they needed, either what they prepared for in advance or was there...
But in your observation, though, did you, were you concerned at the time?
I was not sure. I would say that I was not sure.
And one thing I think is really important to point out, Dr. Payne, how many years have you been coordinating this committee?
Thirteen plus.
In 13 years of doing this work, and I've only been here six, but I have not been made aware of an issue where the committee felt like there was not appropriate time for discussion and discourse until that February meeting that you referenced. And I just want to really congratulate and acknowledge Liz for being proactive and taking action to try to correct that, to make sure that that didn't perpetuate into the future. So, again, like she always does, she just demonstrates the utmost professionalism.
Well, as someone who was at the meeting, I can tell you that I was very concerned that that discussion was cut off peremptorily, and members of the committee were not allowed to speak on a number of points, and it happened repeatedly at that meeting. So, it does leave me concerned that you didn't react and say, "Hey, this isn't really how this committee should operate." You know, even if it is in accordance with Rob's, Robert's Rules of Order, the point of the committee is that it discuss the issues that are in the family life education program and discuss the charge that's before the committee. So, I do appreciate the change that was made. Obviously, that, I think, was badly needed. But the committee, that meeting itself, I have to say, was frankly, not the best work of FCPS, and far from it, actually, in terms of how that meeting was handled. And the impression that was left on all the community that was there, and those board members, those committee members who participated, was in fact, the opposite of what we've discussed in here, which is, there was no conversation. There was no discussion, and they, in fact, their voices were shut down. So, when we talk about diversity of viewpoints, that was a real failing at that meeting. So, I appreciate the change, and I would suggest that it is indicative of maybe some rethinking as we approach next year's FLECAC, that maybe we need to sort of look at again that process, and who is on, who are the constituent members of the FLECAC committee, and where is the diversity of opinions that's on that committee? Okay, thank you. On Slide 6, it says, "No recommended changes to lesson objectives K through 7." Can you just explain, Dr. Payne, why there were... Can you just explain, Dr. Payne, why there were no changes recommended? Were there any changes proposed?
I would need to go, I would need to go back to my notes, but not that, not that I recall. I would have to go back and check.
Okay. I'm going to, this next question I have relates to, I think, several board members' comments about when the committee makes a recommendation, and the decision of staff to either accept that change or review that change. On Slide 7, you mentioned that the "you are in charge of your body" media. It was the board, the committee voted to include that in both grades 3 and 4, I think is what-
That's correct.
-they've said. And the question I have is, when that was proposed, what was the alternative in grade 4? Was there something that was removed, then, in grade 4? And when that, when the committee made that choice to substitute in grade 3, how long had the grade 4 video been in place? And was that also a suggestion of the committee to have that video used? And I guess the question I have is, I think along the lines of Ms. McLaughlin, which is, I understand that the committee is looking at the curriculum and making an advisory vote on something, but what then happens when it comes back to staff in terms of an advisory vote? Do you then reflect on it and say, "Yeah, but that's not really what we want to do", or do you typically just accept them and put them in front of the board and say, "We would like you to vote yes or no on these recommended changes by the committee"?
So I would just say procedurally, I want to talk about a few things, and then Dr. Payne can address the grade 4 video in particular. Again, we could always change our procedures, but our procedures are outlined in the regulations, FCPS regulations, is that we bring the committee's recommendations to the board. We could change that, if we wanted to do that, but, you know, that has been in place prior to me coming into FCPS, so we've always followed the same process. I will say that we definitely reflect on any proposed changes. We talk about the appropriateness of those, whether or not we need to alert any board members about issues or concerns. We look at things that were not approved and question and wonder maybe if we need to look at those again in the future. The grade 4 video last year was one of those issues, where we definitely had questions about, you know, the dissenting opinion, I think, had some very valid points with that. That needs to be something that we look at again in our program for next year, and obviously, you can see that was something that the full committee approved this year.
Right. So, taking what you've just said, then, so in this case, Mr. Moon raised a question about some specific text and discussing whether or not the deletion of clergy was appropriate and deletion of counselor. So, is it fair to say, then, in this case, in the presentation, that on balance, all of the changes that you've presented to us, which were voted on the committee, are also changes that you would say would be, would be approved by staff and best, as opposed to a change such as Mr. Moon?
Well, that's the purpose for today's discussion, is to have that dialogue and discussion with the board, and for you to be able to ask us questions about, "Do we think?", and, you know, staff's opinion that these recommendations are appropriate. Back to the comments that Dr. Brabran expressed to Ms. McLaughlin's original question, we had that conversation in leadership team, and we did agree as a leadership team that we felt that the recommendations of the committee in these areas were reasonable, right? We all have our own individual ideas and opinions, but we felt that they were reasonably appropriate for our program and supported with, you know, evidence-based best practices.
And I guess, then, in each case, then, when these changes are presented, they were considered to be reasonable proposals. Is that correct?
And evidence-based, yes.
Yeah. All right. Let's, I'm going to, I'm going to move on, because I think that, one, along, kind of following on from that question, I guess the next step for me would be, when the board included the concept of sex assigned at birth, which sounds like it was several years ago initially-
Two years ago.
What were the sources that the, or when the, when the staff, what were the sources the staff used then to make those changes?
The same ones that are listed in the slide here. I need to find the slide number, and then we can go to that particular slide.
And how long ago was that?
Curriculum was rewritten in 1516, so would have been during that timeframe that we accessed resources.
That's the first time that term was used?
Yes, it was implemented fall of 16, but during the 1516 school years, when, that's when we had the big change, there were some things, went to General Hall, some stayed in FLLE, and we did a total change, revision.
So, was there specific recommendations to, from like the American Academy of Pediatrics, to make changes in family life education programs? Is that how the source was in terms of making the change? Or was it just, you noted that this was now a term that was being used, and then you folded it in to our curriculum as, as a change?
That's right. We feel that it's appropriate to, again, use medically appropriate, evidence-based definitions in our program when discussing the topic of gender identity. That's what we've tried to do in the program.
Well, I think that that, that the use of that phrase, I think for many in our community is a very charged phrase, and I think that helping me to understand it, I think, would help the community to understand, I think, maybe going to Ms. Schultz's points about how we, how we jive that with what's in our biology textbooks, and understanding sort of how, you know, if there's a disconnect, why there is a distinction between the different forums in terms of how we talk about, you know, human biology and anthropology. And so, I think, maybe, maybe, I don't know whether there's a next step there, but I think that, I think that, I think from a community standpoint, what I get a lot of feedback on is, where did this come from? How do we, how do we now use this terminology? And if other, if other jurisdictions are using it, which I think the only of Virginia jurisdiction, you mentioned it was Alexandria, perhaps not the best comparable in Virginia, why happen other jurisdictions in Virginia? I think there's more of fulsome conversation that might be had to help us understand it, and thereby be able to go back to the community on inclusion of that topic.
We certainly could do that. You know, as always, we're happy to meet with board members individually, and, you know, at any time to talk about any questions that you or your constituents might have. I mean, I think the thrust of your question is, you know, on the topic of gender identity, is that individuals that are dealing with gender identity feel that there's an incongruity between their individual gender identity and their sex that's assigned at birth. I mean, that, that's the context for that definition. So again, we'd be happy to dig into that more deeply with folks, if you have individual questions about that.
I'm sorry, I've got, I've got a list now I need to turn to. Before I leave that topic, though, because you mentioned the disconnect between, you know, the self-perception, one of the questions that I have received from several different parents has to do with readiness, you know? So, for example, in the fourth grade slide, there's talk about incest in the topic of that objective. You know, when you're talking fourth graders, you might have a nine-year-old in there, you know? And the question is, how do you control the developmental readiness of a classroom, understand that there's a diversity of maturity in the classroom for, if kids may, you know, react differently to pretty serious concept like that? And I guess it does tie into the gender identity, so if we're talking about gender identity in middle school, how do you, how do you ensure that you're not going to trigger a lot of anxiety in children who heretofore had never even heard of the concept, never, never thought about it? Is there, is there something in place that protects that child?
Well, one thing I would say, that any lessons that we have on sexual abuse, which incest is a piece of that, is to ensure that schools ask their school psychologists, social workers, or counselors to join them, also make them aware that that instruction is occurring, so that if there is a concern with any particular student at the school can-
It's not so much that. I mean, I just, I mean, my own personal life experience, you know, I can go to an action movie and watch, you know, 400 murders take place in the course of the Marvel action film, and go home and sleep well, or watch a show on the Holocaust, and, you know, it's very bothersome, but it's not going to keep me away for months, keep me away for months. There are others, on the other hand, that would have the opposite extent, some of them in my own household, who would, you'd have to have wild horses to drag them to those movies, because it would bother them so much. And so, given that there's an entire spectrum of how people react to images and ideas-
Yeah, I guess what I would say is-
How do you, how do you control for that?
No, it's, it's a really good question. I think, you know, again, that comes in the training that we provide to the instructors that are delivering the program. It comes in the curriculum materials that we developed to make sure that we're dealing and introducing with really difficult concepts in ways that are age-appropriate. And obviously, the intent around topics, just as you, you know, discussed with sexual abuse, is that could be traumatic for children. It also might be happening to children, and they might need to be aware of ideas about how to talk about it or how to prevent it. And it is happening in society to kids as young as age nine. So, through our curriculum and through our training, we find ways to make sure that we're raising those questions in age-appropriate ways. But we certainly respect individuals and families that might not feel comfortable having their children exposed to a conversation like that, which is why we provide for the opt-out.
Yeah. And so, let's talk about the opt-out for a moment, because I mentioned last Thursday night, and Dr. Brabran, you mentioned, assuming that there was, it was feasible from an administrative standpoint to have an opt-in, what would staff have an objection to an opt-in concept?
You know, that, that's a topic I really haven't reviewed with our leadership team. It's been opt-out, frankly, from the first day I walked in here in 1993. And, you know, we really only have limited things that we have done on an opt-out basis, and this has been one of them. So I'd have to reflect on that a little bit more. I don't know, Dr. Presidio. Well, I would say, I mean, obviously, at Dr. Brabran's, you know, direction, we'd be happy to review that more and take a look at it. I can tell you a couple things right off the bat, though. One of the things that we actually changed several years ago, when Dr. Brabran was in Lynchburg, was making sure that every one of our families receives a hard copy opt-out form, because we did have conversations with the previous board, that there were some concerns, that when we just made the form available online, some of our parents would, you know, legitimately miss it, because they're very busy, and how would they know to access it and find it and send it in? So, we do now require that a hard copy opt-out form make at home with every individual student. To operationalize the collection of 190,000 opt-out forms would be challenging at best. I mean, you know, when we've talked about that before, you know, I do think it would be very difficult. I'm not saying that it couldn't be done, that would be something that the leadership team could discuss, but it would involve folks, you know, outside of the instructional services department. It would involve teachers and principals, and the very folks on the front line that sometimes, you know, do feel overwhelmed by the administrative tasks that we ask them to perform. So, we'd need to talk about that, I think, with the leadership team.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was really, that's why, that's why I preface it, is assuming that the administrative hurdles could be managed, you know, because I think one of our speakers on Thursday made a point that, you know, the failure to submit an opt-out form is not the same as consenting to the entire curriculum being taught to their child. And I think that, you know, one of the reports from one of the meetings this year was that a, one of the committee members said, "Biology doesn't matter anymore." I think that's starting to stray pretty dramatically from, I think, you know, many members of our community. I don't bring this up lightly, but I think roughly 70% of our population still identifies as Christian, Jewish, Muslim, Hindu, or Buddhist. And, and it may be that where we are in our family life education curriculum is now falling away from where the majority of our community may be in terms of what they want our school system to teach in terms of family life education. Just this week, the Catholic Arlington Diocese newspaper published an article that went out to however many, tens of thousands of families in our region about the curriculum changes and their concerns. You know, we don't, we're not a private educational institution, so we don't have to pay attention to that. But when we, some of these topics, and I think now, I think everyone would admit, are controversial and haven't been widely accepted necessarily throughout our culture, and I think we ought to at least think about that as a possibility. Because, and this next question maybe relates to that, is, so now that we've made, with these changes, what are the plans to expand this, this instruction on gender ideology or gender identity, I guess, into the elementary schools?
Well, I can tell you, next year, we have no plans to expand on that particular topic that you raise. I would also say, I know Dr. Payne would really appreciate not having to take such a deep dive and compare the entire program and all of its materials to the state's program, because that has been an immense amount of work for her and her limited staff who are here with us in the work session today. So we would like to go back to business as usual, which is looking at the content and the quality of our program for areas of improvement that might need to be made, that would, you know, be more in line with how we've operated in the past. So a much more limited scope, if you will.
So, but, I mean, would a future area of improvement include revising the elementary school family life education curriculum?
It certainly could. We don't have any plans right now for what that's going to look like for next year at all.
Do, do other jurisdictions, say Montgomery County or Alexandria that you mentioned, have those types of changes to their family life education curriculum?
I'm not sure what other divisions' plans are in terms of their work.
Not plans, but currently, you know, do we know what they're doing at the elementary school level?
Dr. Payne might know.
I know Prince Williams said that they are just going to implement sexual orientation, gender identity into their curriculum. They're working on the materials and resources now, so that has not been implemented yet.
Do you know Montgomery County or Alexandria, what they're doing?
Montgomery County, they're waiting, I think she said, next year, they're, Montgomery County, it's Maryland, their health, sort of SOLs, if you will, and the FLLE are revised at the same time every six or seven years. I think they have a revision coming up, so they're waiting for that.
As far as you know, they currently do not include-
Well, I'm actually looking at my crosswalk document that Dr. Payne helped prepare in terms of some of these comparisons, just internal notes on a few things. And it does appear that Montgomery County has been instructing on gender identities, gender identities since 2008.
In elementary school?
I don't know about the grade levels.
I know Alexandria, I think, does it, has gender identity instruction in sixth grade, sixth and eighth.
Okay. I'm going to change topics now. So recently, there was a public incident in Falls Church regarding sexting, and this is not one of your slides, but how do we address that topic in family life education?
It's explicit, I believe, in eighth grade, and I'm looking at my staff back there. I know it's in eighth grade.
While we're waiting for that answer, just want to clarify, because I know people are listening, people are here, that that incident was not in Fairfax County's Falls Church, it was the city of Falls Church School System, just, just for clarification.
Important clarification.
Yes, at the middle school.
I would have to get the other grade levels, but I know it's explicit in eighth grade.
Mr. Wilson, I'm not trying to cut you off, but I would ask if some of these questions are things that you might want to sit down with the staff.
I think, I think maybe that's a next step for the, for the board to understand, you know, how we are ensuring that we're not having, we're minimizing any problems that we have along those lines. And similar, a similar type question is, I would like to know how our curriculum handles the explosion of pornography, and what we are doing in terms of- in, in terms of helping children navigate that world that is, you know, sort of a click away for them. Do, I don't know, do we address the issue of pornography in our curriculum?
No, sir, not at this time.
I, I would, I would ask that, that maybe at some point, Dr. Braybrand, that the staff talk about that. And, and, you know, I think that's a, a huge influence on our culture currently. And I think that, you know, sort of maybe that's even an elephant in the room when it comes to family life education instruction.
I think we have some information in the SRNR around it, and we can review about the FLE piece.
And in our digital citizenship training, again, that we do with kids in terms of, you know, what's appropriate to access online. Digital citizenship includes many topics. I, I don't mean to go down that, that path right now, but I would say, in the trainings that we provided for parents, in terms of the courses that they can complete and do with their kids, those are the kinds of things that we're trying to make sure that we're supporting parents to figure out how to appropriately monitor and talk to kids about appropriate use of technology and web content. So, not to say that it couldn't be an FLE, but to your question about where we have some support-
Well, yeah, and I guess the, you know, there's, there's, in FLE, there's topics of consent and, you know, lack of consent is part of our instruction and, you know, appropriate touch, inappropriate touch. But if you, I think that that's not the complete story, because I think that where we have, I have two boys and two girls, they are very much influenced about just appropriate behavior, you know, from what they, with the images they see. And that, those images, you know, are unfortunately very pornographic at times. There's a whole industry, and we now know that's billions and billions of dollars, that takes advantage of that. So I think that, you know, we may need to more correctly deal with that issue and kind of deal with it head-on, because we're going to keep our kids safe. Thank you.
Are you finished? Thank you so much, Ms. Hines, to be followed by Ms. Palchak, to be followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I do want to thank the committee. I don't know how many committee members we might have here today, but I know it's hard work, and I know people did do a lot of homework. I also want to be sure to thank the dissenters who wrote the dissenting opinions. I think it was very respectfully written. It lets the board know what your concerns were. And I, and I appreciate that Dr. Payne and, and staff, that you make sure those dissenting opinions have a chance to be heard. It's, it's helpful to us. I think, you know, I understand there was a difficult meeting in February, and I also appreciate that Dr. Payne and the committee made some changes that, you know, made the process feel more inclusive and be more inclusive. And I think, I think the result is the report that we have, which is actually, shows a significant amount of unity. You know, it, it does not seem like a divided committee at the end of the day. And that's good, because these issues can divide people. So, appreciate. The, the question of parents as trusted partners, I wanted to come back to that a little bit because I, I think that's very important. I mean, I, you know, I think we have to trust parents to do their homework and make their decisions about, for their children, about something as important as family life education. And I, I personally support, I mean, and, and it's a state requirement that we provide the opt-out, as I understand it. It's guaranteed by state law. So I just wanted to, we've touched on it a little bit, but just make sure everybody understands that all families can opt-out of all or any FLE lessons. And the efforts we make to make that as easy and transparent as possible, as we do provide the curriculum online, we, we belt and suspenders, the message to parents at the beginning of the year online, and, and a physical paper copy. And so, I, anything we can do to continue to make that a transparent and smooth process for parents, I, I think will help. But it's a very important part of the program. So just to close, I, I would just say, again, I, I think the committee has done a great job. I, I think if anybody would like to see changes on that committee, you know, that's something that we would bring to a forum and ask governance to take on. And I think, you know, I personally, I don't know, I mean, the committee's been operational for a while. I don't know how many Fleecac members are current parents. I don't know how anyone really knows the answer to that question. I don't, I'm not sure that we should have that as a litmus test. I'll just put that out there right now, because I think there are a lot of people in the community who can be helpful, and they don't necessarily need to be current parents. But we definitely would need to have, you know, a further school board conversation about that. And I, I say that because we do provide complete authority and complete power to parents to control what their children learn through the opt-out. So I don't have any next steps. Thanks very much to the committee. I agree with Mr. Moon. I, I think if it, if it doesn't make, if it doesn't hurt us to put the clergy and counselor language back in there, and it makes some parents feel more confident that we're meeting their needs, I say let's do it.
Thank you, Ms. Palchak.
Yes, thank you. I also want to send my, my high regards for Ms. Payne and the work you do. I know every member of that committee and in the community is grateful for your professionalism and your excellent work. So thank you for your 13 years of service to the committee. I also want to recognize the proponentarian, Mr. Morgan, and thank you for your work in supporting the committee. It does sound like for many years, you know, there were not issues in using Robert's Rules, and when a problem arose, you worked quickly to address that. So I think that's exactly what I would expect, and I think what we would expect of those leading the committee. So I appreciate that. And second, Ms. Hines, and thanking all the committee members, I think it's helpful for us to see both the recommendations and the dissenting report, and to see the information that is there and that was discussed. So thank you for that. I also want to second Dr. Braybrand saying that this is for us to be honest brokers of information. I think that is really important when we think about there are philosophical differences, but really, our, our number one goal is to ensure our students are safe, have the information, the knowledge to empower them to have these conversations at home. I know, having been raised by two parents who've been together since they were 18 and 19, there were some issues that until I had FLE lessons at school, did not go home, but then went home and had those conversations with my parents. So when it came to dating, there was very little experience they could share, but I was able to have those conversations with some more knowledge. So thank you. Beyond that, I, I do think it's important to, to enable students to have those conversations with trusted adults. I know this wasn't brought up, but knowing that if we are going to go back and add, and I, I'm okay with defining what a trusted adult is, I personally would like us to also include a physician, especially knowing, personally, I've always had much older male rabbis as clergy where I attended, and, and know that I would have felt more comfortable speaking to my female pediatrician about some issues and concerns. So I, I'm happy to support if we want to define what trusted adult is, and especially if we're looking at the American Academy of Pediatric and Physicians for some of our work, if my board members would be amenable to including physician as one of those trusted adults.
Would you be open to healthcare provider?
Sure, that's fine. Yes, yes, nurse practitioners and others, thank you. Healthcare provider, thank you.
That's usually language we use.
Yes, that would, that would be wonderful. So I know we didn't want to add more, but if we are defining it, I think a healthcare provider would be helpful, just to give students an option over to turn.
Ms. Palchak, I'd suggest you work with Mr. Moon on it.
Okay, thank you. Beyond that, I do, I want to point out again that we do have very public access to the curriculum, to the opt-out, and I appreciate that that has become much more accessible over time. And I think it's very important that we ensure that students have access to this information and to the curriculum and the ability to opt-out. So, thank you. That's all.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, to be followed by Ms. Keys-Gamara, to be followed by Mr. Erin Ekovex.
Thank you. And I echo my colleagues' appreciation for not only the work of Dr. Payne's, Dr. Payne herself and her staff, but the work of the committee, because without that collaborative effort, we wouldn't be where we're at today. And when we look at any sort of curriculum and any changes to the curriculum, we, we should be looking at it from the lens of why. Why do we need to change things? And part of the why is that our society is changing, our communities are changing. And so, I appreciate you looking at our curriculum from that lens. I also want to thank you for including language about boundaries and consent and bystander awareness. I know you and I had a conversation early on about how important it is for bystanders to, if they see something, say something and to get help. It would certainly save lives. So I appreciate your work in that area. And the inclusion of the opioid language, because that too is an epidemic facing our community. I do support the move of the conflict resolution into our health curriculum, because I think that's a skill that all children need, rather than just, huh, and adults? Yes, you are correct. And so, I think that's great. I will support Mr. Moon and Ms. Palchak's modification amendment to address not only the clergy, but I think healthcare professionals are important. And as far as for staff and for people in the community, I think we need to really talk a bit about the importance of the opt-out, because it does give ownership to families and to staff members. So if a staff member wants to opt-out of teaching family life education, I think that that should be fully embraced and accepted. But it's also important for family members to look at the curriculum and choose to opt-out. But one of the challenges when we do have opt-outs is that we need to have real and meaningful work for students to do when they're opting out. And so, I would ask for you, Dr. Braybrand, that we have some sort of parallel curriculum or some sort of real and meaningful work for our students when they opt-out, and that it's age-appropriate.
If, if I might, we do have opt-out lessons for K through 10. They are also posted for parents to see as well. They are aligned to the general health standards, so they're non-FLE topics. And they are meant for students who have, whose parents have opted them out. So we have that.
I will tell you that I've had parents say that they've opted out and their students weren't giving the, given those opportunities. So I guess we're going back to fidelity of implementation. So this was the first year.
This was the first year.
So we might want to add a little bit more context or information about that, so that parents know that they have that option.
But I do want to say, I mean, because of your advocacy and other board members' advocacy, that is why we took the step to develop those aligned lessons. So now we just need to make sure that they're implemented consistently when families and students choose to opt-out.
Thank you. Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Well, I too want to thank everybody, that everyone that's worked with this process, Ms. Payne, Dr. Payne, and all the committee members, and the dissenters, and just so many people have come to our meetings and offered their opinion. I also want to, to say that I, I appreciate our board members working together to try to make sure that we're talking about the same information. I know that I've received a number of letters that just made assumptions that weren't actually the fact. And so, this is an opportunity for us to correct that. I actually even received an apology from someone. So I think that our, our people are receptive to discussion. So I appreciate this opportunity. I will say, my perspective is to try to make sure that all of our children are able to get the information they need to make good decisions, but also to be inclusive and not to create any type of shame for any child. I, I am going to take a slightly different approach than some of my colleagues, because I'm actually concerned about some of the information that is struck out, because I think it may, I would love to hear the explanation as to why. For example, there's a, seems to be an overall change from disease to infection. And I'd like to hear the explanation as to why we made that change. The reason I question that is, in my work with kids, their ability to assess a risk properly is less than optimal. And so, I think that perhaps the language "disease" would help to understand that this is serious business, but perhaps there's reasoning that I don't understand. So I'll start there. I have a number of questions. Did you want me to go through all my questions first? You can address that.
Let's do them one at a time, if that's okay.
Okay, sure.
So the sexually transmitted infections, that is the acceptable term medically. So we made that change several years ago.
Okay.
So in some cases, we're just cleaning up some of that language.
Okay, all right.
We, we do talk about that, you know, sexually transmitted infections may cause disease, like HIV to AIDS. So we do talk about the disease process, but STI is the acceptable term.
Okay. I figured there was a reason, but I wanted to explain why, as somebody who works with this, these issues, or works with children on a regular basis, as to why I would question that. I then want to look at section 10.7. Yes, I'll look at 10.7 and 11.3. There are a number of things struck out there. And I would love to hear particularly, I understand the strikeout of violence in the first sentence. I think that was just, looks like it was for clarification, because it was not perhaps as well-written as it could have been. But when you look at the bottom, for prevention of sexual violence and abuse, including in dealing with abuse, violence, et cetera, what was the reasoning for those strikeouts?
It was just a rewording, because we have, in not, what's not struck out, we have verbal, physical, emotional, sexual abuse, internet exploitation, coercive sex, and human sex trafficking. So a lot of that was recaptured in the, in the wording.
I guess my concern is, there is something very violent about abuse, and I, I, maybe I'm overlooking it as I look at it quickly here. But I would not want to lose that meaning, because I think in translating this, we're softening the, the harm that we're talking about.
And I think the effort was, was to do the exact opposite, was to reduce victim blaming. And that's why, you know, they talk about the fault and responsibility, and we talk about abusive and coercive behaviors.
Right, but there is something very violent in the inherent nature of this type of abuse. And I, and I, I would like for our kids to understand that this isn't just, I liked a girl and I touched a girl, but that there was a violation, and it falls in the category of violence.
Right. And that, it says teen dating violence in the objective. So the descriptive statement is supposed to explain any, you know, concepts that we felt needed further explanation. So maybe we just, we're not going to lose that.
I'll make that, you know, I don't know if I can list that as a, as a next step to make sure we're, if staff can look at the most effective way, because I do think in working with young people that they may not grasp how these actions are impacting another individual. And I want to-
Could you restate your next step for staff to look at the issue of-
Can I suggest, maybe Ms. Keys-Gamara, and we can do it now, but if you wanted to come up with language, I know Mr. Moon is going to work with Dalian, come up with language. If you have some language you want us to ultimately have included in here that captures that essence, we could work to have that ready for the Fleecac new business.
I'm happy to do that, but perhaps now, what I'm trying to make sure is that we don't soften the language with respect to understanding the impact upon a victim.
And I was just going to suggest, we'd be happy to work with you-
Sure, please work with me.
-on some draft, some draft language that you could propose to your colleagues.
Sure, great, thank you. All right, so now I think I'm going to go to 11.3. For the same reasons. There's an overall softening of this language, I believe. I think we mentioned controlling behaviors that lead, I have in my notes, controlling behaviors that lead to sexual assault, violence, and domestic abuse. Again, I don't, I would like to look for language that properly conveys the impact upon the victim. This is not to, to blame the victim at all, but I, I think that part of our education is helping all of our students to understand how you can harm another person. And I'm not sure that when we look at what's available to us in the media, or how we talk about things in a flippant way, that that is clearly communicated. And so, I'd like to work toward language in 11.3 to make sure that we're doing that.
So just for the next- So just for the next steps for our board clerk then, staff would work with Ms. Keys-Gamara on 10.7 and 11.3, draft language on those proposed lesson objectives to be shared with board colleagues.
And to bring an amendment on June 14th, correct?
Okay, yes. That'd be great, thank you. Okay. Okay, so there were some objections to... Well, I'll leave that. Let's... With respect... I just want to clarify, because I understood this language, sex assigned at birth, is used in the definitions and in the discussion regarding transgender children, is that correct? But those are the limited uses of that language, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So in that regard, I will say that I will support Mr. Moon's recommendations and Ms. Palchek's addition to that. I also heard some comments about medical risks and that, things of that nature. I'm a little nervous about that, because I think getting into the risks... I don't want to get in the business of consulting in the way that a doctor or, you know, people in the medical profession would do. And I don't think we're qualified to do that. So those are my comments at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darren Kowpex.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Presidio and Dr. Payne, for your hard work on this committee. We know it was a challenging year, and you've been doing it a long time. So thank you for doing it with grace and poise and making certain that all people's opinions were heard and valued. I also want to thank the FLEC Act committee members who are here. I know there are several. I know my representative is here. So thank you so much for your hard work on this committee. We do appreciate it. And thank you also to those who voiced the dissenting opinion on this report. We appreciate your opinion as well, and that makes us work together and look at the whole picture. So thank you all for all that you've done. I have very few questions other than the one I am... I was... Ms. Keys-Gamara and I were sidebarring on 11.3. So that's page 24. So I can be added to working with you all to do that. But my concern was with the descriptive statement where we talked about instruction will include identification of controlling behaviors. And we talk about coerced sexual activity, including human trafficking and digital and social media, taking out the word sexual assault. If you, you know, if you want to speak to that as to why, I think you're going to tell me it was for clarity, and I appreciate that. But I do think, you know, when you talk about coerced sexual activity, that's compelling by force, whereas assault is attempted violence. And I think that maybe have a little bit different. And I think that lesson needs to be really reinforced and kept in there. So that would be an amendment that I would be willing to put in for that one. I'd be happy to work on the language at 10.7. I think that's a little more complicated. But for this one, I would just appreciate putting back in sexual assault to that statement.
Yeah, we'd be happy to work with you on a proposed language change.
Okay.
So before I go to three quick go-backs, I will just also thank everyone who worked on this. I know it was a phenomenal amount of work. And thank you to the committee members. I see my FLEC Act appointee as well. Thank you for your many years of work on the committee. And I will agree with my colleagues that we also very much appreciate the advocates, whether dissenters or whether supporters of the changes coming out today, coming to have emails to board members and to engaging the committee and engaging board members with your views. So thank you all for your advocacy. I do have three go-backs, and then we'll go to next steps. I do hope that we'll be fairly quick. I have Ms. Schultz, Mr. Wilson, and Ms. McLaughlin.
Yeah, I didn't have a chance to put together my next steps. I kind of wanted to wait to see where everybody else was before I provided those. I do want to note that basically with the way that it's been described, and I appreciate the fact that this has historically been the way that the language exists such that staff merely brings forward the recommendations of the committee. But the reason why there wasn't larger dissent on the committee was because of the, frankly, homogeneity of the makeup of FLEC Act. And so that's actually the underlying issue, is yes, there wasn't a lot of dissent because... Or the votes were overwhelming, because there is a common purpose for many who are on the committee. And I think if we're in an evidence-based practice of delivering information to children and medically accurate, I appreciate Ms. Keys-Gamara in particular saying, "We're not in the role of playing the doctor." I agree, and I think there's a whole lot in this curriculum that should actually not be within the realm, because we are actually providing medical information to children. And that's why I let off the whole question, which is, what is the purpose of FLE? And if it is to impart, you know, information about the human growth and development of the students in our system, we've kind of ranged far afield from that. So that's actually part of the point. And so I did provide some next steps to... And they're not up there yet, but I'll just quickly read over them, because I think it gets to the heart of what some of the... What some of the underlying issues are, which is, are we at a decision tree for this board of approving a curriculum that comes from a handful of people that's been voted on, that staff necessarily hasn't written... I mean, there's a dissenting opinion by two or three people on the committee, but there isn't even... We haven't even provided in our own regulation the means by which staff actually provides their... And maybe this gets to Ms. McLaughlin's point, their professional opinion on what the recommendations are. And, you know, for example, the ninth grade video that was taken out, I'm not exactly sure how that was taken out. So we have this whole discussion about the fourth grade video, but then the ninth grade video was taken out, and it wasn't... I can't find a vote on it by the committee. And so it seems like there's things that staff can just do, because staff decides professionally it's the best thing to do, but then sometimes not. And so that disparity, I think, elevates some of these concerns of, you know, what are the FDA and CDC guidelines and clinical protocols regarding PrEP?
Could we discuss this as next steps?
Sure, sure, we can discuss them as next steps.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. Just very quickly, it was mentioned earlier that by one of my colleagues that PrEP is not approved for children under 18. Is that accurate or not? I guess is the question I have initially.
I believe that to be accurate.
Are there any other pharmaceuticals that are included in the FLE curriculum by name that are not approved for kids under the age of 18?
I don't know that for sure, but I don't believe so. Again, a lot of it is not only age, but what their health status is.
Sure. I just am trying to understand the inclusion of this one specific drug as being specifically mentioned in our curriculum.
Well, it's really because of the Center for Disease Control taking a very active position that, due to the effectiveness of this particular medication for high-risk populations, that individuals in high-risk populations should be aware of its existence. So again, that's, you know, we're not...
For all ages?
Well, they don't provide guidance on age.
I mean, I guess my question is...
I mean, again, that's a decision for a family to make with a medical professional.
I don't disagree with that. I just... If there are no other medicines that we include... I mean, certainly many medicines could be helpful to children that parents can choose with the consultation with their physician. I just am trying to understand this particular medicine, what was the thought process, and why not other medicines?
Well, because of its effectiveness rate dealing with, you know, sexually transmitted diseases. So, I mean, it's again aligned to that particular lesson objective. So you have to talk about it in the context with which it's discussed in the curriculum.
Well, I think I'd like to ask as a next step that you do go back and look and see whether there are any other...
I have it in the...
Sure.
Pharmaceuticals. I think Ms. Schultz may already have that, but I think that's probably worth it.
The clerk would record that as something that will be said. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yeah, I just wanted to have a quick go-back, because what Ms. Keys-Gamara and Ms. Kowpex said about the language in 10.7 and 11.3, I share their concerns, and I'm glad they kind of brought focus to it. Obviously, we always want to have streamlined language, but I worry that the changes have made things far too obscure, very abstract. And we're talking about families and high school kids, especially being able to understand sort of the intent there. So, you know, obviously, Dr. Braybrand, we don't want to create extra work for staff. So even if it's not a matter of, yet again, a third iteration, I'm still a little bit of a loss of how these highly specific terminologies were pulled out when they're all pretty clear. And as both a parent and a board member, I feel like I can read that and know what's the descriptive purpose. And I... So the high-level language, I just wanted you all to know. I'm not only supportive of it. I appreciate that you don't want to be working with 12 board members on this. But I very much want to see, at minimum, we either restore what I think is really important, descriptive language, or you all figure out the balance there. But I really look forward to seeing those amendments. I think it's important.
Thank you. And so now we can go to next steps. Before we do, I neglected to say I do support Mr. Moon's amendment as well as Ms. Palchek's suggestion for an addition. So Madam Clerk, if you could pull this up. Let's see what the spectrum is. Mr. Wilson, are you suggesting we compare our curriculum with any others in this state?
Yeah, unfortunately, the staff wasn't able to identify any specific jurisdictions that might be a good comparison to get a sense of the spectrum. So I think I'm not asking every county-wide review, but maybe there's a way to talk to the Board of Education and get a sense, and then kind of quickly have us understand what that spectrum might be.
Yeah, as I said, we'd be happy to contact the state educational specialist in that area to see what they can provide.
Well, I would suggest then that it be worded so it doesn't suggest that we're going to go line by line through somebody else's curriculum.
Although, Ms. Evans, I think we have done that. They've mentioned that today, actually, that they've looked at other curriculums.
But what you're asking is that they go to the State Board of Education to get a general comparison of our curriculum? Is that correct? Is that what you're looking for?
I think what I said initially is what I'm talking about, which is that I think since the majority maybe of counties are providing their own curriculum that's compliant with the Board of Education's standards, and we have ours, and we do certain things in ours, I would like to understand, what is the range? What's the diversity of, you know, from one end of the spectrum to being sort of the, perhaps, not an accurate term, to be the most socially conservative to the most socially progressive? I think that would be a useful understanding, because right now, what I see is comparison between the lesson objectives, and it's pretty tight. But without understanding exactly what's being implemented, it's really hard to understand what is possible.
Yeah, and I think I understand what Mr. Wilson is asking for. And again, I don't know if it's available. I don't know if it's something that we could obtain, but I'd be happy to talk to the Department of Education to see what might be available.
Ms. Heinz, did you have a comment or question?
Well, if Dr. Presidio feels comfortable answering the question, that's fine. I was a little confused by socially conservative and socially liberal. I'm not sure whether staff is going to be asked to make that sort of determination.
Yeah, I mean, the language on the next step, I mean, again, that's in the board's purview to try to decide. But what I would ask the state is to see if we could get examples from other jurisdictions in terms of what their curriculum is and...
I think you understand.
Yeah, without making any value judgments about it.
All right, so let's see how many board members support doing that? How many oppose doing that? Okay, so we don't have that as a next step. How does FCPS FLE curriculum handle sexting and pornography? So you're just looking for a factual answer to that question?
Well, right, I mean, I don't even know if it's included in the curriculum at this point. So, I mean, I think that they were going to go back and look, I think is what you said, and to understand sort of... And maybe to understand what the proposal might be going forward.
Okay, so how many can support that as a next step? How many oppose that as a next step? Okay, oh, Ms. Palchek?
Is it possible to add to that? I believe as of a few years, we have actually state legislation around that. I believe Delegate Simon passed the revenge pornography bill, so to see if our students are being educated on the legal consequences.
So now you're kind of into the SRNR world.
So I know a lot of it is in SRNR.
So there's lots of different places.
Some of this also.
So again, we would be talking about where in FLE, where in digital citizenship, where in SRNR might some of these topics be found.
And along the lines of Ms. Heinz's comments, I don't know that "handle" is exactly the right word. You know, but you get the point.
Okay. All right, that was a majority, so we'll go with that. Ms. Keys-Gamara, do you need that as a next step? Or are you simply going to do that? Do you want that recorded, that you're going to work on this amendment?
That's fine.
Okay, well... Okay, with proposed language.
I'd like to leave it just so our staff has clarity that that's a follow-up with a board member.
Now, if we're going to do that...
We have a lot of next steps. It's helpful for us to track these.
Then in that case, I would suggest we capture Mr. Moon's as well.
I think I can work on it. I think I can handle it.
You don't need that up there? Okay, all righty, okay. All right, well, let's see, let's read. So does that capture what you're asking for?
Yeah, that's fine.
Does that work? Okay, so let's see how many people can support number two? I mean, I know, it's... All right. But if we're going to capture it, we need to capture it. All right, Ms. Schultz, provide FDA and CDC guidelines and clinical protocols on PrEP for children under the age of... Under the age of 18. Do you want to... Okay, so you're asking for staff to give any guidelines and protocols on this?
Can I ask a clarifying question? Do you mean provide that to the board or to the children?
To the board.
Okay, Ms. Corbin Sanders?
I would... I don't have a problem with this, but I think one of the things... If we're going down that path, then we should also include it in context, in the context of whether there is a higher risk of HIV for student... For children between the ages of, say, 13 to 29, and whether the CDC has any recommendations on addressing that risk. Because...
We should probably...
That's what it's asking for.
Well, it's not necessarily... So it's first, define what the... Why there's a... Why the CDC is even addressing PrEP? So what is the problem we're defining? And the problem is...
Is that a separate next step, Ms. Corbin Sanders? Or do you think it wraps into this?
I think it really needs to put it in context of what is the risk factor that they're addressing? Because the CDC doesn't address anything unless there's a risk factor. And so is there a risk factor? No, for HIV, what is the risk factor of HIV cases for the adolescent and young adult population that PrEP addresses or PrEP could address? I'll make it separate if you like, but I would also look at it as a, not only a general, but also where Virginia falls in HIV cases.
Okay, well, with that, let's go back to Ms. Schultz's. Okay, well, with that, let's go back to Ms. Schultz's request that staff provide any guidelines and protocols. How many people can support that? How many people oppose that? Okay, so that is, we agree to that. Let's go to Ms. Corbett Sanders. It's related, but we're making it separate. What's the risk factor of HIV cases for the adolescent and young adult population that prep could address? Is that...
Yes, I would put Virginia in there as well.
Okay, that's a majority, we'll go with that. Ms. Schultz, provide what the current FCPS textbooks and curriculum state about the basis of sex.
So, the reason I state that is because we have textbooks that clearly and rather definitively say that the chromosomes are what determine sex. So, I would like, this is, I mean, we're not going to use sex, we're going to use sex assigned at birth, and I want a recognition of, for us to understand what's being taught actually in the textbooks and what's in the curriculum before we change other parts of the curriculum.
Do you mean outside of FLE or, so outside of the FLE curriculum is what you're looking for? Yes, Ms. McLaughlin?
Sorry, just a process question. I mean, in layman's terms, I mean, sex can be an action between two people. So, I mean, I think Ms. Schultz's request, we need to have the clarifier about the basis of, or the current, I don't even like the current state about the basis. I mean, what you just want to know is what's the current terminology being used in our textbooks and curriculum related to biological sex definitions, right? Provide what current textbooks and the curriculum use in referencing biological sex?
Well, I put sex or biological sex because I don't know, I'm not assuming that all the textbooks say biological sex, so I'm trying to cover both bases.
So, then would you say sex and gender?
No, I didn't say gender.
Okay, well, all I know is, unless staff, maybe you're all clear and that's fine, but Jim's saying, obviously, we're not talking about sex between two people.
I just want to know what the current textbooks and curriculum we're using say with regard, I don't mean sex between two people, that's clearly not what this is intending. I'm talking about the sex with regard to a person.
Ms. Kizgimara?
But my, I guess my question would be, staff is telling us that, staff is telling us that sex assigned at birth is used in this context of the conversation of transgender. So, no, that's what they just, they're nodding their heads yes.
No, no, let me try to restate that. I apologize if there's any confusion. So, the proposed lesson objective change, where the committee is proposing to use the terminology sex assigned at birth, only pertains to that one lesson objective that deals with transgender. The definitions that I read during the work session on biological sex, I mean, I could reread that statement, but biological sex is still in our definitions in the FLE program.
So, the reason I'm asking this question, if I understand Ms. Schultz's question, is it's relevant to us only in the context of discussing transgender people, just based on what we're discussing here.
That's correct.
Well, actually, what the issue is, which I sort of got a clarification from Dr. Presidio, is that there's going to be places now in the FLE where we say biological sex. There's places in the FLE where we're going to say sex assigned at birth, and then there's places in our regular curriculum and in our textbooks where we say what? And I want that third part filled out, which is, okay, what happens in the rest of the curriculum and what happens in our textbooks? What else is being said? Because the question is, what is the, what's the crosswalk, if you will, across, because now we're doing two different things just within the FLE curriculum, and how does that correlate to what's happening in the rest of our curriculum?
So, but I just want to clarify, the change that they are describing today only took place with respect to the issue discussing transgender. So, what it was before for everything else is still the same. That's my understanding.
So, maybe I've got an old version of the report, but on page three of the report that I reviewed, it says change lesson objectives in grades eight, nine, and 10 to strike biological sex and replace with sex assigned at birth. Is that being that, is that incorrect?
So, we don't have the report or the slides up. So, I would suggest we pull up probably the slides. And we need to go to, let me find the correct slide, I apologize, slide nine.
This is actually why I'm asking for this, it's confusing for us even here at the table. I think we just need a crosswalk, that's all I'm trying to do.
I think it's 10. I think it's on...
Well, it's on two slides.
Oh, it's on, okay.
So, let me review this, and I apologize, I know it's late and...
So, on page five of the report is the first place where it occurred.
Right, we have the slides up now, so I'm going to go ahead...
That's where it says only related to gender identity.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and review this one more time, and I apologize for the confusion. This is obviously a very important point for the board and for the community. So, you see lesson objective 8.5 in our emotional, social health domain. The particular lesson objective is that students will identify that development of individual identity occurs over a lifetime and includes the component of sexual orientation and gender identity. Then, in the descriptive statement, you see that the committee has proposed that we strike biological gender and replace it with sex assigned at birth. So, when we look at where that actually occurs in our curriculum, this is the only change that the committee is recommending, but the term sex assigned at birth is currently in our curriculum in our lesson definition section on topics related to gender identity. So, I want to read that statement, that definition again, because we're not, I need to find my, find the right page. We're not recommending a change outside of that lesson objective 8.5, but in our definition sections, we define biological sex. So, at grade eight, we say biological sex is a person's biological sex that they're assigned at birth. It's associated primarily with the physical attributes, their reproductive anatomy, and other anatomical physiological structures, chromosomes and hormones. So, biological sex is defined within the context of the gender identity concepts as your sex assigned at birth, which is associated with your physical attributes, reproductive anatomy, and other anatomical physiological structures. So, when people say that you're striking those biological ideas from the definition of biological sex, we're not doing that. We're talking about, well, it's still in the lesson definition. So, I mean, I understand it's confusing, I definitely understand people will disagree with it, but I just want to state it as plainly as possible that the change that the committee is recommending is just with respect to the language in the descriptive statement of 8.5 at this time.
Dr. Presidio, I don't mean to be too particular on this, but I think that the report is pretty clear, and I think maybe Dr. Payne can clarify what exactly the committee voted on, and it is pretty clear, it says change lesson objectives in eight, nine, 10 to strike biological gender. It doesn't say just for 8.5. I appreciate if that's all we're going to do is just 8.5, I think that makes sense. But just to clarify, Dr. Payne, at the meeting, what was the decision of the FLIC Act Committee?
They wanted to change lesson objectives eight, nine, and 10, but it only appears in grade eight. Now, the language is used in lessons in ninth and 10th grade, but it's not in the objective itself.
And so, if other occurrences of the term biological sex, would that also be replaced elsewhere in the curriculum? Other uses in, I mean, wherever, age, grade seven, seven through 12, are other uses of biological sex being replaced with sex assigned at birth? My understanding was that it was, but if you're telling me it's not, then, and maybe it's just a correction to the report itself, I don't know.
I think it's definitely a correction to the report, because again, there's, there is no lesson objective in grade nine and 10 where that language occurs. It does occur in the lesson definitions, which I just read, definition of biological sex.
Ms. Heinz, did you have a comment?
Well, I'm just thinking, we're on next steps, and we're digging back in, and I feel like we've already spent a lot of time on all of this. So, I wonder if we could get back to Ms. Schultz's, and if I could maybe restate it and ask Ms. Schultz, or stated in my own understanding and ask Ms. Schultz if this is accurate. I think what Ms. Schultz is asking for is for us to see in our biology, science textbooks, everywhere that we define sex/gender, what that, just so that we can crosswalk that ourselves?
We don't have the textbooks.
But aren't you asking for them to give us that?
So, I am confused because the report does say that any place where biological sex occurs, replace it with sex assigned at birth. So, there is an increasing lack of clarity, unfortunately. Usually, a work session provides more clarity, but this is just, we now have two different interpretations or definitions of sex in our FLE. We have in some place, it's biological sex or sex, someplace, it's sex assigned at birth, and I'm just wondering what the rest of our curriculum says. And I think if we're going to go to the place where we're incorporating this at a younger grade or more clarity, or less clarity, at a younger grade, I do think that if we're teaching it someplace, we have to understand what's being taught someplace else. It's not that difficult for us to know what's being provided in our textbooks.
I think we understand Ms. Schultz's advocacy. It seems to me, just as one board member, that that's more work than I would want staff to have to do.
Well, let's do this, you know, let me have our folks take a look. If it's too difficult or too complicated to get, we'll come back and say so. If we can find it, we'll find it. So, I'd rather, for the spirit, we've had a very healthy discussion today on two very big topics. I'm confident either we'll be able to figure it out in short order, or if it takes more time, we'll come back and let the board know.
All right, well, let's see how many people can support asking for this, and again, I believe Ms. Schultz wanted it for our non-FLE because we've gotten, correct?
You're correct, it's not the FLE.
So, it's the non-FLE textbooks and curriculum about the basis of sex, which you've told us is not the act, but biological sex or whatever. All right, so let's see how many people can support asking staff to do this. How many people oppose it? All right, that's majority support, so we will ask for that. Provide the list of medical risks voted down by the committee, medic, okay.
There were a number of topics where, whether or not to include medical risks should make their way into the curriculum, and those were not voted, I just, rather than like the whole dissertation, I'd just like to know what the medical risks were that were voted down to not be included in the curriculum.
Was that not outlined in the presentation, which ones they were talking about?
I think I'm a little confused.
So, things like what are the medical, what are the medical risks pharmaceutically to different drugs, to different procedures?
So, we don't present as far as a transgender individual transitioning such as...
Or birth control or anything else. I mean, this is not just, this is just through the curriculum in general.
Let me ask a clarifying question for Dr. Payne. Did the committee vote on, discuss and vote on any medical risks of any other medical procedures or medications?
There was discussion on adding the risks and side effects of different contraceptive methods. They wanted to add it to grades nine, 11, and 12. It is in ninth grade?
I mean, I think the girls should have access to what are the risks of putting chemicals into your body. I mean, I just, I think that's a reason...
I was just trying to clarify how expansive that list of medical procedures or, well, that's why I was asking Dr. Payne, and if that's the only one, we certainly can provide information on that, but I just wanted to clarify that...
I think abortion was one, I think.
That motion fails, so nothing changes, that's in there.
So, we're still giving students the risks.
Yes, ma'am.
So, here's the information, here's the, I mean, this is no different than I am anywhere else in any of our information. I want to know the pros, I want to know the cons, and then let the person make the information. And I just want to know if we've actively said we're not going to include any, a risk, I'd like to know about it.
But we definitely can do that. I think it'll be a relatively short list for this purpose.
Okay, how many board members want to see that list? How many do not? All right, it's two to three, so abstentions.
Could I ask board members to vote if you possibly can? Because it would be nice to get through this list relative, you know, I know it's tough because we don't really have time to discuss these next steps, which have kind of been thrown at us. But if you have two people voting for and nobody votes against, I would not say that's a majority supporting it. I would say that's not a majority supporting it.
All right, so...
I don't think so. I think the votes are in the majority of people here.
We're on six out of quite a few, so, well, but it was two to three, so let's try again. How many people want to support number six? How many people say no to asking for that information? All right, so we won't have that as a next step. Provide the normative term for sex and biological, what do you mean by normative term?
Evans, can I ask a point of clarification or a point of order? I absolutely appreciate all these next steps being put up here. I don't quite understand, and I can't vote on many of them because I don't know the context, because they were put up without a discussion at the board table. And so, I would just urge that in the future, I mean, we can certainly go through these now, but I do think from a governance point of view that we have to have a conversation about how we put next steps on the, at the bottom of an agenda without having had a discussion.
I agree, Ms. Corbett Sanders, this is very unlike some of our other next steps. Next steps were typically presented at the table, and then we had time for discussion. I think that's why we're struggling right now. What we see here is we don't have context and we haven't had a conversation, and that's why board members are...
So, now we're discussing, we're discussing quite a few...
All I can say is that clearly the amount of time that was allotted on this agenda for this topic was insufficient. This is the very first time, so this has been in development, this curriculum has been in development for the better part of a year. We've had one chance to talk about it. Staff chose not to present to us on Thursday night, where we could have asked some initial questions. This is the very first time, and in an effort to try to have everybody bring as much information to the table, some of us curbed our comments. I could have taken all the time from the microphone, but I would have been a shoot away from the microphone by the meeting manager. So, these are reasonable questions that all have ties to the conversation that's happened around the table.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I have a process suggestion, and Dr. Brabran, this really turns to you. These are highly detailed, and I agree with a lot of board members. It takes some real reflection for any of us to be voting yes or no to these. I would suggest that these be submitted to Dr. Brabran, he and staff review them with Ms. Schultz and Mr. Wilson, who have submitted them, and if there's anything that Dr. Brabran says, that's too much for my staff, I'm not going to do it, then, you know, at that point, he can just send it back out, we'll figure out another way. But there's no way with, it's already 2:20, that we can go through these. I'm not going to vote for anything, I'm sitting here abstaining because too many of these things require talking, but it's fine for Mr. Wilson and Ms. Schultz to want information. So, why can't we just capture it as, here's additional information that additional board members want, and it'll be shared with the full board, and there you go. I mean, and if Dr. Brabran says and shares, this list is 16, we can't get done in time?
Well, and I think, you know, any board member can certainly talk to staff and get answers to specific questions that they have about the curriculum. answers to specific questions that they have about the curriculum. It's not necessarily something that the full board has been asking for as part of our consideration. I think what we're going to need is, anything that the board feels it needs before we make our decision on June 14th is something that should be up there. But to the extent this is information that Ms. Schultz and Mr. Wilson want to have, that we should ask them to sit down with staff and ask for this information. So, having said that, that would be my suggestion going forward. And unless there's something that the board actually needs to vote on, getting information isn't something the board needs to vote on. Ms. Hines?
Well, yeah, I hear you. So what I'm doing right now, and thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, I think you made a good suggestion. I mean, I'm looking at it right now, there's nothing in here, given what's on that page, that I feel like I need, right? So my feeling is, let's go ahead and let Mrs. Schultz and Mr. Wilson ask their questions directly of Superintendent Braybrand, and if there are things that can be answered before we have to vote, please share them with us in a superintendent memo, and then that takes care of the rest of this meeting, right?
Well, I'll entertain that as a motion, then, if you want to make that. All right, well, how many people can support? Oh, Mr. Wilson, go right ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. I guess, I would say, first of all, number 16, I don't think, you know, we didn't get down to number 16, but the one that is my name on is the next step, that's actually not what I want, I think it's already covered in the one above. I think we've got, don't we have a next step on PrEP already? That I thought? But I did have a next step that I wanted to have on there, which is for Dr. Braybrand and staff to evaluate the possibility of using a different type instead of an opt-out and opt-in, given the demographics in our county. Because I think it is an important question to understand, you know, what is the administrative burden to do something like that, given what we know to be the faith communities within our county? So, I think we need to understand that. As for these, I think Ms. Schultz was trying to promote efficiency in our meeting. I would advocate that instead of just saying that these questions need to be submitted, that if she wants time at the microphone to ask her questions of staff who are here, that she chose to put them into the next step format, that we might all benefit by hearing answers.
I'll stipulate, however, the meeting manager wants, but I would just like to say, from a governance perspective, we've never prevented a board member from putting up a next step. So, if we're going to change the government, we regularly just submit next steps. We regularly present next steps that come as a part of, and the reason I didn't develop my next steps is because I did actually want to have a fulsome discussion, hear what all my fellow board members had to ask, and there were great questions about sexting and the level of occurrence of that, and there were things that, as a result of the conversation, created the next step. That's actually how it normally works. Now, if people don't want to publicly vote on this, which our own committee did not publicly vote, this is part of the problem. I don't know which, there are a couple of members from, for example, the medical community on our FLEACAC. Did they, were their votes abstentions or for or against some of these? So, we're about to do the same thing, which is, if you don't want to vote on it publicly, and you just want to allow me to ask these questions, but I do think this is salient information. And if this board gets into the habit of saying, "We don't want to know information," well, actually, in deference to the people at the table, there are some people who said they don't want to know. And so, if you don't want to know, I think it's incumbent upon us to be willing to have all the information, even if it's some information that another board member wants to know, is it helps inform us, it helps us be better policymakers. And so, there's nothing here that is saying, "Hey, look, I'm delving into a place I don't want to know." This is related to the development of a curriculum that's been underway for a year, to which we have not been privy. And so, if you want to, as a meeting manager, just say, "We're going to turn it over," as Ms. McLaughlin said, I will stipulate to that to save us time, but I am not the one who allotted the time, which was extremely limited for a year-long development of a curriculum, and all of the work that staff has done, and all of the work that the members of the volunteer community done, I'm not aware that we do anything to that level and say, "Well, we're just not going to have sufficient time on our one work session to discuss it." We usually have ample opportunity to have a fulsome discussion.
So I have two go-backs, Ms. Cor...
It's not a go-back, I want to make, I venture, because I just want to make this, the motion formal, because I already said it before Ms. Schultz spoke. I'd like a formal motion, and have someone to consider second it, that Ms. Schultz's questions be entered into the record and submitted over to Dr. Braybrand, you know, and staff to work on. They will report back to her if there's anything that they can't answer to it, and any information he provides, the rest of the board can see it and review as they desire.
Okay, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Ms. Hines is seconding my motion.
Oh, Ms., okay. So, we would, so, Ms. McLaughlin, under your motion, these would not be next steps, they would be questions submitted to Dr. Braybrand and shared with the full board. Okay, and you're seconding that motion, Ms. Hines?
Sure.
Okay, so let's see how many people...
Could we, Dr. Braybrand?
And Dr. Braybrand?
All I want to say is, listen, we've had two huge topics this morning that are huge community topics, and I think it's been a very thoughtful conversation with the board. At the very end, I want to keep that positive collaborative momentum. We'll be, I'm supportive of this motion, staff will be able to review it. If there's something that we're not going to have before that time, I'm going to be upfront with you and say, "I can't get it in that time," or the amount of workload to get in that time is too much, and I would do so. Otherwise, we'll be glad to review them. And I just want to reiterate, too, if there are questions that occur to you after this meeting, we're happy to follow up individually with board members in person or in writing, so please, you know, make sure that, you know, you take advantage of that if there's anything that we can do to help you in preparation for the vote on June 14th.
Ms. Kies-Gamara? I'm sorry, I had the wrong Karen.
That's okay, I just want to clarify, I feel, part of the reason I'm supporting Ms. McLaughlin is because I feel that I, we really would be giving short shrift to what you're suggesting, Ms. Schultz. I, in many ways, there, I have so many questions about what you have up there, I don't, because we didn't have an opportunity to have this as part of our discussion, as I did with the other statement that we have already removed here, I'm not clear on what you're asking. And so, I don't feel comfortable going through each one where I'm having a lot of questions, and we haven't discussed it. Let's face, I mean, for me, I have to face the reality of this, I think we started discussing this around noon, it is 2:30, and we haven't eaten lunch. I can tell you, I do not give you my best if I have not eaten. I mean, that's just the bottom line, so...
Well, I think we do have a motion on the table.
And I will support that motion.
And I believe then, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Ms. McLaughlin, but the next step then would be to record the fact that board members, it doesn't have to be just Mrs. Schultz and Mr. Wilson, board members will submit questions for Dr. Braybrand and staff to respond to. Would that be our next step, then, just to record that that's what we're doing?
I, my motion was, there's 16 things up here, just, we're going to vote, these 16 things are, have been provided by the board, they're being sent over to Dr. Braybrand, and then obviously, Dr. Presidio said anything that comes after, they'll follow the same protocol.
All right, Ms. Hines? Okay, so, all right, so let's take a vote on that. How many people can support that approach? How many people oppose that approach? All right, that's a majority, so that's what we will do. And with that, I believe this meeting is adjourned, this work session, rather, is adjourned. We will now go to lunch.